United States of America, due to the Republic, which stands on a nation, underground, individual, with liberty, justice for all.
All right, as always, I'll ask everybody to sign their cell phones while in the meeting room, and especially for board members, please speak into the phone, into the microphone when you're speaking, also when people are at the podium, do the same. Tonight, we have six voting members and one alternate member present, Felix Lopez and alternate member Vijay Gopal will not be able to attend, so I'd like to appoint alternate member Kevin O'Connell as a voting member for tonight's meeting. Thanks, Kevin. Just a quick update on the herring sanitation site construction, or really, a lack of an update. Mr. Bodendorf sent an email saying that he was not able to get to the herring site so far, and indicated that he'll visit the site very soon and report back to the board as soon as he can. John, do you want to give us sort of an anticipated timeframe for that?
I would expect that I'd be able to do that Monday or Tuesday of next week, as long as Larry Pajee is available.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so tonight, we have two public hearings. The first one is a continuation. This is the SKLJ Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. I'll read the public hearing notice, just for the record. At 7:00 PM or soon thereafter is possible. Applicant seeks Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit approval to redevelop an existing 2.17 acre parcel for mixed use. Existing buildings on site are proposed to remain and be repurposed. Residential use is proposed that will be renovated, and a 55-foot by 80-foot addition is proposed to an existing garage with eleven parking spaces that will be used for storage. The remaining building will be used as an office for storage use. The parcel for the proposal is located at 125 Old Route 9 and consists of 2.17 acres in the GB General Business Zoning District. Again, this is a continuation of the hearing that was opened by the Board at the October 12th Planning Board meeting. Welcome again, Mr. Burns.
Good evening.
First of all, since the public hearing was opened at the last meeting, we don't need a motion to continue the hearing tonight. Mr. Burns, if you could, I know that you submitted a letter dated October 25th responding to comments made at the October 12th public hearing, so I was wondering if you could just briefly summarize those responses before we invite the public to speak again tonight.
So, I went through and I identified, it looks like I have 13 comments. You know, to go over them real quick, the name of the company is SKLJ Storage. They will operate a storage facility with a combination of some indoor storage and some outdoor storage. The area is not proposed to be used as a junkyard. The area proposed for outdoor storage is about, I believe, 20,000 square feet. It's intended to be used to store, you know, trailers, boats, RVs. That's the type of seasonal equipment that people have trouble storing at their, on their own home sites. The garage, the existing garage is 520 square feet, and we're proposing to add 4,400 square feet for a total of just under 5,000 with 4,920 square feet for the garage and the As far as storing chemicals, fuel, or anything, anything like chemicals or fuel, that won't be happening on site, is those things can't be stored without additional permits or anything. There's the possibility that inside, that furniture and other household items will be stored in the, inside the building. You know, there's, it's going to be a mixture of some of the owner's stuff and probably a lot of the owner's stuff in the, inside the building, and any additional space they can rent out as desired at this point, but that's, that's also to, you know, to change. There's, there's parking proposed for, the parking spots are proposed for parking to serve, serve the storage. They're not proposed to actually store vehicles or anything like that. They're, they're there, they're there to be used for parking of people coming to the site, and then the cars generally leave. There's no rock, there's no rock hammering or removal as cited in EAF. There's no, there's no proposed signage at this time. There's, there's screening with some plant, some Norway spruces and the existing fencing along Old Route 9 that screens the property from, from the road. The reasoning behind my identifying all the commercial properties is because most of the, most of the properties that actually surround this parcel are commercial properties. We have a multifamily, a multifamily, multi, multi-building facility to the north of us, followed by another, another commercial facility to the north of that, that I'm not really sure what exactly they do. Across the, across the street, there is an adult home, I believe, and to the south, there is a gym, and on the other side of Route 9, to the west, there's, of course, splashdown. So, a lot of the, the stuff that surrounds us directly is, is commercial uses. Mixed use is a term that, that is basically defined as using multiple uses is allowed in the, in the town or municipality on the same site. So, it could be a mix of residential, retail, commercial, any, any use. When you, when you have multiple uses, it's termed a mixed use. The hours of operation are going to be Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and Saturday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the storage use. The residential use will, will be all the 24/7, obviously. And the, once again, the outdoor storage area is 20,000 square feet. That's, pretty much covers all the comments that, that I identified during the, during the public hearing last month.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, if we could see a show of hands from members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's continuation of the hearing. All right, I see one who already spoke at the last hearing, but are there any others? I don't see any other people. I think we will let you speak again if you have any new comments to make, not repeating. Yeah, so we're going to, let me just, for the record, read the rules of conduct for public hearings, which you've already heard at the last time, but we'll just carry that over to the next public hearing as well. Speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone. Speakers are limited to no more than four minutes. There will be a warning when there is one minute left. Speakers should provide only new or different information. Repetitive comments made previously or at prior meetings are discouraged. Speakers are encouraged to submit their comments in writing so that they can summarize their comments during the hearing. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the Board at tonight's hearing. There should be no verbal interruption, shouting, or other outbursts, and no speaker shall make any personal attacks on anyone. I think that's good for now. So, again, if there's only one person who raised their hand to speak, I would assume you would like to come up to the podium and let us know what other items you may have for this.
Russell Malli, 142 Old Route 9. Good evening. I just have some question concerns in regards to the applicant's responses. And to the Board, a question. Just how many trailers, trucks, RVs, boats, cars, et cetera, can be stored on this 2.17 acre of property minus the building's footprints? And is there even a maximum? All these trailers, trucks, RVs, cars, or homes are just nurseries for mice, rats, cats, roaches? Right now, there are numerous unregistered wrecked, open, rusting vehicles and trailers on this property. Some have been there for five years plus. The neighbors, the neighbors adjacent to this property are not commercial uses. There are three family homes, homes to three families and a single-family home directly to the other side of the fence to this property. And those stated multifamily buildings and garages on site are not commercial buildings. It is where the homeowners store their lawn mowers, snow shovels, hoses, Christmas decorations, tools, et cetera. They're personal property. These are, they are not commercial buildings. And there is an assisted living home for mentally challenged adults across the street. They're, it's their home. It's their, and there are three residential homes less than 200 feet from this parcel. Mine is one of them. Plus, there is a proposed residence home to be, right on the parcel itself. So, the stated response to the question 10 by this building applicant is, in my opinion, an untrue, unfair misrepresentation and should be corrected for the record. I truly would appreciate the responses, clarifications to my questions before this project begins to proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Do you have those in writing that you could submit?
I have, I could submit it.
Yeah, if you can do that later, that's fine. Okay. All right, is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak to this matter tonight? All right, before we decide whether to close the hearing tonight, we'll let the applicant come up and just, if you have any quick responses to any of those additional comments, please feel free.
I, the, a multifamily, a multifamily site is, in my, in my consideration, is a commercial property. There's a business that's going on. They're renting apartments. When you look at a three-family home as opposed to the building department, you look at the building code instead of a residential building code. I kind of consider that a commercial, a commercial development, as well as the, as well as the assisted living facility across the street. And as far as how much we're going to store outside, we have identified the, the outdoor storage with a hatched area on the site plan. However, many units that are there are going to vary depending on the size and the type of units that they're storing at the time. But it'll always be in the same, in the same location. It's hard to quantify an actual number of, of vehicles or whatever is going to be stored there without, you know, to give a number without knowing, having previously rented the spaces. And as far as the, the existing, the, the existing cars and everything on site, those, those will, any unregistered vehicles, they're, they're the, the property of the owners, and a lot of those things will be most likely moved inside the building. You know, he's got a, he's got his race car and a couple other cars that are, that are sitting outside in front of the building now. I think that, I think that sums up what we have.
All right, thank you.
Will, will cars be coming and going, because I know they have a tow business, so like, is there?
The tow business is operated out of Marshall Road and, Marshall, Marshall Road in the Village of Wappingers. Lee's Towing is actually-
No, I've seen the cars there. They've been there quite a long time. I just was wondering, like, had a concern of like, how many, you're going to be coming and going, if they're going to be bringing more cars there?
They, as far as, they're his, they're his personal, personally owned cars, so, you know, he, he's into, he likes cars, so he's got a lot of stuff to do with cars and everything else. So, those, those are being stored. As far as unregistered vehicles and stuff, that would, that would be a junkyard and, you know, we can't, that needs other permits and is a whole nother use in itself.
Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I was just-
You have to come up to the podium if you're going to talk.
I was just going to say, the cars that are existing there now, they're my husbands. They belong to us, and, you know, we've had this property for about 15, 16 years now, and we're just, you know, we were kind of waiting for water and sewer to come our way, but obviously, that's not going to happen. So, most of those cars, the ones that he's going to keep, are going to be moved inside. The rest of them will be disposed of so that we can make room to put and make rentals out. So, that's the intent.
All right, well, perhaps the Board might consider including some kind of a condition to that effect when we do get to the approval phase. Let's see, if, well, if no one else wishes to speak at tonight's hearing, I guess we'll turn to our engineer and attorney and ask for your advice on whether we should close the public hearing tonight.
I don't see any particular reason to keep it open at this point.
Me neither.
What about the Board? How do you feel about it?
I'd support closing the public hearing.
Me too. Yes.
All right, would someone like to make a motion to close this public hearing tonight?
I'll do it.
In a second.
Fred moves it. Anthony seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. Okay, so the Board will continue discussion of this application later on tonight under project review, so we'll see you a little bit later. Second public hearing is Star of Bethlehem Baptist Church Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. At 7:00 PM or soon thereafter is possible. Applicant seeks Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit approval and, oh, and, sorry, to utilize the existing building located at 37 Ramplight Street for a house of worship to assemble, congregate, and other biblical studies. Worship services shall take place weekly on Sunday mornings. Occasional Sabbath study sessions shall take place midweek, and there are no plans to alter or change the existing building footprint. The parcel for this proposal is located at 37 Ramplight Street and consists of 2.1 acres in the RB Restricted Business Zoning District. So, welcome. Before we get started, I'm just going to mention the public hearing notice was published in the town's official newspapers on October 25th, 2023. However, certain of the required neighborhood notifications and posting of the public hearing sign at the site entrance were not accomplished by the applicant as required by town code and the required timeframes. So, upon the advice of the planning board attorney, it has been recommended that the planning board should open the public hearing tonight, take any public comments, and then keep the public hearing open and continue it at the December 14th meeting to correct any procedural issues with the public hearing requirements. Am I understanding that right, Don Vic?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, so I just want to make sure that the applicant is aware of and understands that. Okay, so is there a motion to open this public hearing?
So, move it.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Jody seconds it. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. The public hearing is open. Again, welcome, and please, before we ask members of the public to speak, if you could give just another brief overview of the proposal for the benefit of those here tonight or at home watching.
Okay. Good evening, all. Thank you. Good evening, all. My name is Barry Simmons. I am the chairman of the trustee ministry at the Star of Bethlehem Baptist Church. Accompanying me this evening is Daniel Blackburn, our pastor. This past week, we did finalize purchase of the building of the property. We are currently in the process of going through and making sure that the building is maintained adequately for, for the neighborhood. There has been a marked improvement visually on the property. Currently, right now, the only plans we have is not to change any of the exterior portions or the outlook of the building. We do plan to renovate or just remove the bar area, which is on the main floor, and use that as a congregating auditorium. It's my understanding that we have to basically get a building permit in order to do that type of work, so we're in the process of submitting that to the building department and then establishing the, a new water meter and electrical services that, that may be During the course of our visit to the property, we have come across various individuals who will walk up into the property and ask us, you know, exactly what we plan on utilizing the, the building for. And the comments we've received vocally from residents that surround the area have been very, very positive as far as, as our presence there. I'm not sure if there are any other comments, but maybe they'll be brought up later at, at this public hearing session.
All right. Anything you'd like to add? Okay. Yeah, you don't have to. All right. So, let me see a show of hands from members of the public who may wish to speak at tonight's hearing on this matter. Is there anyone in the audience who is here to speak?
No one on this side.
No one on that side?
No.
I don't see anyone on this side. All right, so what I would like to do, though, is read into the record a letter that we did receive. It's a letter of November 7th from Robert Palace Jr., the maintenance supervisor for the adjacent Rambout Village. Have you seen a copy of this letter?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Let me just read it, and then we can figure out what to do with that. So, he says, "I'm writing this letter on behalf of Rambout Village and the Board to the planning for the building of the Star of Bethlehem Baptist Church. We are a cooperative community located in Beacon, New York," actually, in Fischke, New York, with a Beacon address, "and are the neighboring property of where the church would be located. We have a couple issues that have been going on for many years that need to be addressed. When the land and building site was developed, the surface water drainage system was and still is failing. Unfortunately, with Rambout Village being located at the bottom of the elevation, the improper drainage has created increased flooding in the buildings near the property line. This situation was addressed in 2013 when Mary Carries was inhabiting the space, but it ultimately wasn't corrected, and the building sat vacant for quite some time. With this being said, the remediation of the effects of this flooding has been time-consuming and expensive. It is a never-ending battle to keep the surface water out of our buildings, especially after a good rainstorm. In conclusion, we kindly ask that the Town Official Planning Board members address this serious matter. We all have one goal, which is to keep our beautiful town and the people who live here happy." Again, that's from Robert Palace Jr., the maintenance supervisor at Rambout Village. So, since there was no one present to speak to this matter, and we've entered that letter into the record, I'm going to ask if, if there is, just checking one more time, if there is anyone here who wishes to speak, let us know now, or we will be leaving the public hearing open until the December meeting. But I still see no additional hands. So, I would like to ask for a motion to keep this public hearing on Star of Bethlehem Church open and continue the hearing at the December 14th meeting for the reasons that I mentioned earlier. Fred moves that. Is there a second?
Second.
Jody seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so the public hearing will remain open and be continued at the December 14th And I would ask the applicant to be prepared to respond to the comments in Mr. Palace's letter to the extent that you can on December 14th. So, that should give you some time to think about it and maybe do a little bit of research on the matter if you haven't already. And if possible, it would be good if you can submit written response regarding that matter to the Board by the deadline of November 29th for the December 14th meeting.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Thanks for coming tonight. Okay, moving on. We have a presentation and discussion for a project to be known as Fischke Landling. Proposed Site Development Plan and Proposed Special Use Permit. I'm going to read this rather lengthy description and save it for the presentation, so I might want to try to summarize some of it, but this project would be comprised of a road system and bridge over the empty railroad tracks, and it would consist of a residential development of 116 units at the northern end of the parcel of approximately seven and a half acres. The remaining 110 acres will be dedicated to the town of Fischke, 10 acres of which will be above high water level, and 100 or so acres are underwater rights. The 116 units will be housed within four separate buildings ranging in height from two and a half to three stories. A waterfront park is proposed in the southern area. A future park could include a boat launch ramp and paddle sports access pier to afford residents a variety of water-based recreation opportunities. Restrooms, showers, and public parking will be incorporated into the design of the park along with a riverfront walkway that will allow visitors to experience the waterfront. The proposal requires the issuance of a Site Development Plan approval from the planning board and the issuance of a Special Use Permit approval from the town board. The three parcels for the proposal are located along the Hudson River waterfront off Rockway Road and Industrial Way. All parcels are in the HRWRD, which stands for Hudson River Waterfront Recreation Zoning District, and the planning board will allow informal comments from the public tonight after the presentation and the discussion of this proposed project. So, one more thing before we start. I would like to disclose that I live in a neighborhood off Rockway that was developed by RPA Associates LLC, the sponsor of this proposal, and I live not far from the proposed project site, although not directly adjacent to it. I also knew Mr. Purna in the early 1990s when I worked at the Westchester County Department of Planning, and Mr. Purna was an appointed member of the Westchester County Planning Board. I do not believe that I have any conflict of interest in reviewing the proposal and believe that I can remain objective in deliberating on the proposal. So I do not plan on recusing myself from this matter. So having said that, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Other than your recusal, I think you gave away my whole presentation.
Yeah. Very short presentation.
Okay. Good evening, Joe Stefrena. I'm the owner of Site Design Consultants, so engineering firm based in Yorktown Heights. And RPA and AVR. Tom Purna has been a client of mine for almost 40 years. Just to, you've got an overview of the project. Just to give you a little bit of history, AVR purchased the Rockway Brickyard site, which this was part of, back in the midnight, early 90s, mid 90s. And as you know, they've developed all the way up to Route 9D with residential and commercial development. In the early 2000s, we were proceeding with an application on this parcel, which was based on a mixed-use development of residential and commercial and public lands. And the cost to access the property because of the railroad tracks was prohibitive. And since then, because of that, it went dormant. There's still an existing tramway, which is right here, from when the Brickyard was in operation and this property was used as this shipping area for barges for bricks after they were made on the upland side. So the, since that time and more recent times, AVR, through some title information, discovered that there is an existing easement across the track. And I should say that when they bought the property, right at the end of Industrial Way here, there was a grade crossing there. And after they bought the property, MTA, Metro North, closed that grade crossing off. So there was access at that time. But it was recently discovered that there was an easement that dates back to, I think, the 1920s at this location right here, where the, to generalize the description of what the content of the easement is that MTA is to provide access to this property, to the 110 acres, at that location. And it infers that they're even supposed to build the crossing, whatever the crossing may be. RPA is in discussion with Metro, with MTA on this already. It just initiated that discussion. It's been difficult to get a hold of them and get them to the table, but that's where we are now. So as the chairman stated, this town, this project also is jointly beneficial to the town because the town will get just under 10 acres of upland on the Hudson River to be used as parkland. Now, we showed a conceptual idea of what you could do there. It's really going to be up to the town to decide what ultimately they want to build on that site. But the idea here, at no cost to the town, the town will gain this acreage and it will be deeded to the town. It would not be an easement or any of that, or anything like that. So the intent is, you know, to build this roadway, cross this roadway here off of Industrial Way, cross the tracks, come down, end the roadway at this location here. And the proposed element for the condominiums would be access from this point here. So AVR's intent is to build the road, build the bridge, provide the land to the town, create a walking area or walking path along the shoreline here. And again, to deed, you know, to deed the land, the almost 10 acres to the town. To date, the project has received endorsement by the town board by resolution, by the county executive, from an assemblyman, and I hope I get the name correct, BFAM, and State Senator Rollison. To make it possible to get this project going, RPA has applied for funding from the Empire State Fund and the Mid-Hudson Momentum Fund. So they're looking to supplement some of the construction costs here by gaining that and making this project real and feasible. You know, as the chairman said, we had a preliminary discussion to talk about the application process in SEAKER. The intent is to make an application at the end of this month. And hopefully, this project moves forward. And I think it's an exciting project. I worked on the original one going back almost 20 years ago. And we thought it was, you know, was a great idea then. But now, there seems to be a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel and we might be able to get this project done. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have or anything else you'd like to know.
Yep, go ahead, Fred.
You said two different things in your presentation. One, you said that MTA was going to build the bridge and then the other, later on, you said you were going to build the bridge.
So let me just fill that in a little bit. That's what it says, that they're supposed to. But we know there's no shot in them doing that. But in the least, if we can get them to relax some of their requirements and their fees and whatnot and we can gain this funding, it will make the project possible. I, I mean, we have no hope that they're going to build a bridge. But if they can work with us and make it a little more affordable, then that's what we're shooting for.
So are you planning on putting this in in 2030?
Could be.
Is it?
Could be.
Is that going to be the only access way?
What's that?
Is that going to be the only access way and exit way out of that property?
Yes. And well, we're also going to push them to put the grade crossing back in for emergency purposes only.
Okay. I was going to say.
Yeah.
And the units, the 116 that you're proposing, whatever, are they luxury, senior?
I don't have an answer for you on whether they're going to be senior or not. They, there's, they're going to be two- and three-bedroom units. And, I'm sorry, one- and two-bedroom units. One- and two-bedroom? One- and two-bedroom units.
Just trying to figure out the amount of traffic flow.
Yeah. I mean, they're, I mean, they're going to be waterfront properties. I'm sure they're going to go for a premium.
What percentage of the funding would you say you have in the bag, so to speak? 10%? 50%?
Right now, we have nothing in the bag. If we could get to 50%, that would be, that would really make it a viable project.
Yeah, I'm just testing viability.
Yeah.
The 2030 date.
Yeah.
It's going to be some structure, I guess, for that roadway bridge because if that's going to have to be where construction vehicles are going over and coming over and...
Exactly. I mean, it's going to be, you know, it's going to be a highway-rated bridge. The roadway is going to be deeded to the town. It's going to become a town road. So it's, you know, it's going to be a substantial, a substantial bridge.
Yeah, that actually was brought up at, I think, both our pre-application meeting but as well as the town board presentation. There was a discussion about turning that road over and the bridge to the town. And I think there was some possible hesitation by our future town highway superintendent-elect who indicated that there could be substantial cost to the town if the town did take that over. So it's something to keep in mind.
Right. Our intent right now is that the bridge and support structure for the road is going to be as much as possible concrete and not steel. And if possible, the bridge system that we're using are pre-stress, pre-cast arches. So they'd be constructed off-site and delivered and dropped in place. And that also plays into, you know, not having to shut down the tracks that much to do the work. So with that, I think you're going to get a much longer, less, a lot less maintenance and a lot more lifespan than going with steel.
I'm sure there are going to be more questions from the board, but...
Yeah, we'll have plenty of time.
Plenty of time.
I didn't want to jump in here, John.
Okay. I want to do that, but then I want to give Liz Axelson a chance to...
You mentioned your proximity to the project. At the top of the project, I'm even closer than John is I'm at Six Champlain. So the rear of my property has a direct line of sight to this project.
Okay.
The clubhouse. I could see the clubhouse and the project would be right behind that on the other side of the tracks. So based on that, it would be my intent to recuse myself when this becomes a formal application. But I want to make that known tonight.
Okay. Thank you. So Liz, welcome. I didn't see you walk in, but I know you were at the pre-application meeting on this as well. Actually, we had two meetings. And just wanted to check, although this isn't a formal application yet, to see if you have any questions or observations at this very early point.
Well, I did kind of sneak in. I tried to be quiet. Nice to see you, Joe. Yeah, there were a couple of pre-app meetings. And, you know, what I'm taking away from it, there are sort of opposing nuggets in this that the site has its liabilities and its challenges, but I guess in the big picture, I have to look at the big picture that there are some real opportunities here for the community in terms of some waterfront parkland. I can't speak highly enough about that because I grew up on Lake Champlain. And the city of Burlington had these little nuggets where you could get close to the lake. And it's really something. And I know the city of Beacon has its parkland that's right on the Hudson. But also, having worked on a couple of projects up in the town of Poughkeepsie where some remediation was necessary, you know, it's a long haul. It's costly. But in the long run, if the site isn't developed, then there's really no impetus for anybody to do that remediation and reclamation. So in the grand scheme of things, I think those are boones. I know that there's a town board special use permit, which is going to be interesting because the process, they don't really specifically have a town board process. So it'll follow the planning board's process and with, I believe, discussed in a meeting, a retrofit of the town, of the planning board's special use permit application. But it would go by the planning board's, the regular zoning, special use permit standards, site plan, and the design guidelines will be especially important. And, you know, I don't think we could predict right now where it's going to go with SEAKER, but it is a pretty intensive project. So it could, at a minimum, be sort of an expanded full environmental assessment form or possibly an environmental impact statement process to cover the whole thing. I know that some, there were some, there was some environmental review done in the past regarding this site, which may or may not be helpful toward the details needed for the town board and planning board's current review. And so you've already been in front of the town board. I saw that presentation. And then I guess one of my concerns that, this is one of the things that keeps going through in my mind is, I know that there's underwater land and I don't know if that means that it's land sometimes and at other times it's flooded. And I look at the maps, but it really doesn't tell me the story short of a site visit. So I don't know if you could sort of answer that question.
I will try to. I will tell you that, well, I'll tell you that the FEMA flood elevation here is about seven feet.
Right.
And generally, most of the site is close to that or above that. There are some low spots and it gets down to like five feet, I think, and six feet. But from, and it's been a little bit since I've walked the site, but there's a defined shoreline and you can see very clearly how high the water
Right.
historically has gotten.
Sure.
And so I've never been on there where I could say, oh, it's wet or soggy or whatever. It's always, you could see a defined high-water line. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It does. And I'm assuming, does that mean there will be a certain amount of fill that would have to be brought in?
There will. In order, for the residential site, in order to get it out of the flood plain elevation, we're going to raise the site.
I mean, those are my big questions. And then the other question is, I know that on the site that I worked on up in the town of Poughkeepsie, there, they had to cap some soil that had an issue. And that resulted in them having to bring in a certain amount of soil, which was graded out and became, you know, the base for several multifamily buildings. And both in the city and the town they're being built. It's a way of capping whatever is there.
That would be, that would be our intent also.
The what?
That would be our intent also.
Yeah. I guess those are my general questions, comments.
I had a few more questions or just observations. I think we talked about this at our preliminary meetings, but the visual impacts on the river and the shoreline obviously will be key issues to look at.
On both sides.
A lot, yeah. Right. Along with, you know, building layout and architecture and configurations on the whole site. So, you know, we look forward to seeing some more details on that coming up in the future. Certainly, traffic on Rockway Road and Route 9D is an issue that will have to be carefully looked at. And we talked about that before. And, oh, I think Mr. Purna had mentioned at the town board meeting the intent to include, I'm not sure how he phrased it, but affordable units in the housing development. And the town actually does have affordable housing provisions in our code. And so, you know, you should take a good look at those and match those up with what Mr. Purna was talking about because it actually is a mandatory provision for moderately priced units for low to moderate income families when there are a certain number of housing units, which I think is over 10 or more. So this would certainly apply to this development.
Certainly.
But I don't know if you want, if you can talk a little bit more about what the intent of that kind of a provision would result in this development.
I don't, I don't want to because I don't know enough about that. But I do recall now that he made that part of his presentation, that he was proposing, I think, 10%. I think was the number he put out there. And it would be in support of local, of the local community, police, firefighters, teachers, making it affordable for that. That was just, I guess, what he came to mind for him, but I think that's what he threw out there.
Yeah, I'll just mention, if anyone wasn't able to see the town board presentation, that should be available on the town website. So certainly take a look at that.
There's a little video that... There's a little video that, I guess we were not able to show it tonight, but there's a little video that, on there.
And then I think as Liz was beginning to mention, the SEACR review and coordination with the town board and other involved agencies will be certainly one of the first things we'll have to figure out and decide who's going to be the lead agency in the overall review.
Jonathan, I didn't know how much detail you wanted me to, you want me to touch base on any of the environmental resources on the site?
Oh, just briefly, yeah.
Okay.
We talked about the flood zone already.
Right. I, I know it possibly, it's, the full environmental assessment form mapper notes a principal aquifer. There's possibly bald eagle habitat, and of course, indiana bat, northern long-eared bat, sturgeon. Archaeological sensitivity is noted. It also notes proximity to Mount Gulean. And our engineer, Christian Moore, had come to one of the pre-app meetings, and he had noted the issues of vegetation removal and wildlife resources. That's pretty important. Transportation and traffic in particular, concern about the configuration of the road in with that basically almost a 90-degree angle.
Right.
And the concern about, you know, emergency vehicles and, and traffic getting in and out of that. And of course, that also, you know, flows over into access by emergency and community services, emergency fire, police. And then, you know, we don't have any numbers of volume right now, but eventually we will about public water supply demand. Those are just a couple of the points that'll come up in the environmental review. I did look it up, based on the information I have now, it doesn't seem like it would be a type 1 action, but, you know, there's still more information to come in. Whether or not it's a type 1 action, there is the possibility that it could go to an environmental impact statement review. So we'll see.
Actually, a question that we'll need to look into, or I don't know if you're familiar, Liz, with the status of any designations of the Hudson River as like a scenic and recreational river or whatever it may be, which might trigger something SEACR-wise? If you, if you don't know off the top of your head...
Well, it definitely is.
If you can whip into it.
Yeah, that's definitely a scenic resource. One, one of the reasons that I had been pushing in a comprehensive plan update for the town to do the local waterfront revitalization program is that the town then goes through a process where they, they then have a lot of policies related to the local waterfront revitalization program that could come to bear on SEACR review. But all those, all those objectives are still just as important whether you have an LWRP in place or not. So I think visual analysis will be very important, especially from the river.
And I think our update of the comprehensive plan that we just adopted earlier this year did talk, does talk about the values of the waterfront and the Hudson River and public access to it. So the comprehensive plan was supportive of encouraging access to the river.
Yep. Years ago, scenic Hudson had a program, but I guess it runs from Poughkeepsie north towards Albany, trying to help communities put together funding for overpasses over the train tracks. But it's, it's a different region, unfortunately, so.
I have a few, a few things. I know the flood elevation was mentioned earlier. I, I think one of the other topics that would need to come up is resiliency. This has tightly influenced the Hudson River here, and, you know, the flood elevation is seven. I believe high tide, I checked in the website, is like a three. I mean, is this thing going to be underwater in 50 years, 100 years? I mean, the town's going to take over acres and, as a park, and maintain it, and it's underwater in a relatively short amount of time, that's going to be a long-term cost to the town.
That's right.
And, and its residents. Also Brockway Road, we talked about that, but, you know, you're adding more traffic. The town's going to have to think about long-term repairs to Brockway Road. You're going to have possibly people bringing boats down there. So a lot of heavy vehicles going down Brockway Road. That road's already starting to see some signs of, of wear. And policing. Now we have to think about policing this public area if it's, it becomes something that the town takes on. And I, I think maybe there are more questions for the town board than, than us, but they're certainly factors to consider. I know we talked about a lot of other things, I don't want to take up too much time tonight. I plan on commenting as a member of the public as we move on, but I, I think those are important factors to bring up tonight.
Good.
Sorry for...
No, no.
Absolutely.
That's good. Any other questions or comments from board members? Certainly going to be an interesting review and probably a pretty complicated one. Mr. Bodendorf, do you have any very early thoughts or observations?
No, I mean, I, at the last pre-app meeting, which I attended, I, I did, they presented a map that showed the access road to get to where the, the crossing would be. And it appeared that it was going to go right through the Fishville Support Center's stormwater management area. So that's something they're, they're going to have to take into consideration because that's not something that can be easily moved.
And Mr. Cordisco, do you have any thoughts?
You know, I'm, it's a very interesting project for a number of reasons, but it's also a project that likely has potential to have significant adverse impacts associated with it. I would encourage the board and the applicant, you know, to perhaps identify that an environmental impact statement might be the right way to go, and if that's amenable to the applicant and direction of the board, you can make that decision fairly early on in the process. And that way you can start getting public input, you know, through the scoping and whatnot, and try to identify exactly what needs to be studied for a project of this magnitude.
All right, well, let's see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments tonight regarding this proposal. If you can raise your hands, we'll see if anyone wants to speak about it. Okay, I see one gentleman there. All right, well, what we'll do is we'll ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and home address for the record, and you'll have four minutes to speak, and we'll give you a heads up when there's a minute left.
My name is Peter Giuliano, I'm at 8 Champlain Way in Waukentown Falls.
Thank you.
The only question I had was, the site plan shows the, the project of the condo complex, and then it shows the park. Am I understanding that the park would just be left as raw land? Or will that be all constructed at one time by the builder?
Well, I don't know that we can answer that here tonight because everything is so preliminary.
Oh, but I guess the question was, is, is that the way it is right now, the land is just going to be left raw? And if it was, that 10 acres, what would it cost to build that park out? I mean, would we ever see that park? Any idea what a park would cost per acre or...
Off the top of my head, no, but it, these are good considerations in terms of...
Yeah, these are certainly questions that I'll be asking. I think you're probably not the only one wondering about it.
Okay, that's, that's really all I had.
Good question.
All right, come on up, Mr. O'Malley.
Just one question. Is this going to be a gated community? Does anybody know that? Or is the public going to have entire access to the entire parcel? Well, around people's homes?
From what I've seen so far, the public would have access to the walkway because that's right on the waterfront. And there would be pedestrian and bicycle access across the bridge to get to the walkway and the park.
Right. So not just the park?
Yeah, whatever the park is going to be, whatever kind of facilities or just open space there might be, because we don't know what that's going to be yet, but that would be fully accessible to the public as well.
Okay.
You know, a gated community, I think that would be pretty difficult to have crossing a bridge, but what kind of access would be allowed within the residential development itself, you know, we have no idea at this point.
That's all I was inquiring. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the question. Is there anyone else? Yes, come on up. Okay, yeah, whoever.
Good evening, I'm Kathleen Berga, I live at 2702 Uron Court. I just have a couple of questions. Will these homes, well, these, are these condos or apartments? That I'm not clear about.
I think the developer would have to answer that, but from our preliminary discussions, I understand that they would be some form of ownership.
And that was my other question, would they be rentals or ownership situations?
Yeah, I guess we'll find out more about that.
Okay.
I think it listed as apartments.
Okay, I, I didn't see the drawing ahead of time, and it's too, I'll go back and look at it when I get home, thank you. And then I just have some real common sense questions, like, how would we create an island like this will be? I mean, it has one access, a bridge. Say if something happens, an accident on the bridge, people can't get in and out. Like, isn't that a requirement for any housing situation where people have two accesses in case of emergency?
I think that's why the emergency access at the, at grade crossing is something the applicant will really need to...
Well, I can envision what that would be though, I know, I was listening carefully, but...
I guess we'll all have to find out. We're, we're as much wondering about these things as you are.
Like a walkway or something, yeah.
Well, it would have, if it's an emergency access for fires, you know, emergencies, it would have to allow vehicles to cross the railroad.
And I just, I'm envisioning safety also, just for the park eventually, but then again, the residences, they're so close to the railroad tracks. What's to stop children? Where would, where would there be a bus stop? You know, people are curious, they'll go near the railroad tracks. Living at, or Overlook Point now, we have fencing that separates us from the...
Right.
...secure, from the railroad tracks. And I like that, it makes me feel secure for everybody involved.
I think, I think that's something the planning board would have to look into along with the town board, but there would have to be some kind of separation.
Yeah, even between the park and the residences. The other questions have to do with the park, but that's, that's a second stage of this, so I won't even get into it, that's another question for another time. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. And then there was another person who wanted to speak, or, no, okay. Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you for all those questions and comments, that was very good. Okay, so I think the next step is going to be for the applicant to prepare and submit formal applications, as you mentioned, both to the town board and the planning board, and to figure out how the SEACR review is going to be coordinated. So we will be looking forward to all that.
And we understand it's a process, and we're ready for it, so, thank you very much for, for having us tonight.
All right, thanks for coming.
Good night.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is a request for readoption of approval, and this is for the project known as TL Holdings of New York LLC, which was a three-lot subdivision on the Board to Review Submission made by the applicant's representative on October 25th, 2023, which is a request for a readoption of the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval that was adopted by the Board on December 8th, 2022, and was granted a 90-day extension on May 11th, 2023, that expired on September 4th, 2023. So, welcome, and if you could just explain the circumstances of the request and kind of give an update on the status of conditions that were in that original resolution?
Yeah, good evening. The circumstances of the request was dealing with the Department of Transportation, New York State, Border Health, DEC, all tended to drag their feet a little bit. I hit the trifecta with a death in the family with two of them that were out for three weeks, and so everything got pushed, pushed, pushed. We finally got everything squared away about three weeks ago. Everything was signed off by all the requests that the town originally had done, but it had gone past the extension unbeknownst to me, speaking with the engineer, they said that we had to put this back on just so we could get the final paperwork in to the Board.
And then I know there was a letter submitted to the Board that kind of got a little bit more into the details, so...
Yeah.
Sorry, would you mind just stating your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gabe Tricarico, managing partner to TL Holdings. Thank you. Sorry.
All right, any questions from board members? John, anything you can think of?
No, I, a lot of times these projects run into these delays because of outside regulatory approvals, so...
And Dominic, do you have any, any feelings about the legal aspects of the request?
No, sir. I think the Board would be in a position to authorize a reapproval for next month's meeting.
Okay, we could do that. Also, I wanted to just check with the Board and with Dominic, it doesn't appear that there are any major deviations from the previously approved plat that we approved. So in that case, I don't think any additional public hearing would be required. But just wanted to make sure everyone agrees with that. If there's a consensus of the Board, we can certainly waive any additional public hearings as a consensus of the Board. I don't think we really need a motion to do that.
Would agree.
Yeah, unless anyone objects, I think that's where we'll go with that. All right, would somebody like to make a motion to authorize our attorney to draft a resolution readopting the resolution of preliminary and conditional final approval for the TL Holdings of New York LLC three-lot subdivision for consideration at the December 14th Planning Board meeting?
So moved.
I think Bob.
Second.
Right, Bob moved it, and...
I just heard Fred.
Fred second, okay.
The crowd.
All right, any further...
Hey Fred, sorry.
The crowd.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, John, is this going to be a 90-day extension or...
No, it's a readoption.
It's a readoption, which gives them, I think, another year, is that right?
Correct.
Hopefully we won't need that, but...
Everything's done, ready to hand to you guys, so...
Okay, well, that's, that's good. Good to know. So, yeah, it's, it's not the normal extension, it, it just expired recently, so it's a complete readoption.
It's a one-minute hold.
So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. All right.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we'll, we'll see you back at the December 14th meeting with a draft resolution for the Board's consideration.
Thank you.
All right, now we have a couple of new submittals. The first one of those is 21 Westage Radiology Center Amendment to Site Development Plan. Applicant seeks to amend the existing site development plan for the conversion of the existing 5,618 square foot Ruby Tuesday building to a radiology center to construct an 1,848 square foot expansion on the east side of the building, and to construct a 933 square foot expansion to the west side of the building to accommodate radiology equipment. The parcel for this proposal is located at 21 Westage Drive and consists of 1.68 acres in the PSC Plan Shopping Center zoning district. This is to refer to the... Center zoning district. This is to refer the applications of the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Dutchess County Department of Planning, and Roundout Fire District for review and comment. And the planning board will allow informal comments from the public, if there are any people here, after discussion of this application. And I'll mention that the applicant has submitted the required application fees and escrow deposit. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Jeff Kane, I'm with Kirchhoff Acquisitions, we're the contract vendor. Very excited that we're proposing to redevelop the Ruby Tuesday building. So we think it's, we've got a great use here. No longer proposed as a restaurant, the proposal here, as the chairman indicated, is to redevelop it as a medical imaging center. What we have is about a 5,600 square-foot building that exists, and then on the west side, the backside of, off the opposite Route 9, about a 930 square-foot extension to install a linear accelerator. Some very specialized equipment, it's really meant for prostate cancer, so it's very, again, very, very specific use in the building. Has about three-to-four-foot thick concrete walls, really create a vault, and the linear accelerator is in the, is then, within that vault, accessed from the inside. It's actually a movable, thick concrete wall that rolls and plays there to seal it as you're in for your treatment and come back out. So again, very, very intensive, very specialized medical use. And then on the east side, on the Route 9 side, is another about 1,850 square-foot extension, which houses some more typical imaging equipment, MRI and CT PET scan in there. And then the remainder of the existing building, really kind of houses the administrative waiting and support staff for those imaging centers. Again, not a lot of staff, not a lot of water, not a lot of sewer out of this, certainly less than what you'd have on a restaurant. I think the list of what stays the same on the site is probably bigger than what changes. No changes to water, no changes to sewer, no changes to drainage, no changes to the access, no changes to sidewalks. We have one circulation change, which, we have Don McKenzie from Inside Engineering here, will talk a little bit about the site and talk about that change in access. And then we have a whole new facade proposed on the building. Have Giovanni Palladino, architect in our office, who can talk about the elevations for a little bit, and what we're going to do. Again, the goal here is to really reflect state-of-the-art medical use here on the site. In short, we think it's a much less intensive land use. It's a much bigger investment on the site here. The equipment and building changes, it's a very costly process, but we think, again, it's something that serves the community, will be, hopefully will be welcomed in the community and for its uses. So we're here, we're getting a couple more presentations, and then answer any questions that the board or the public may have. So thank you. I'll turn it over to Don, she can talk a little bit about the site here.
Good evening, Don McKenzie, Inside Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture. Mind, can I control this, or can you put up our site plan?
Sure can.
Use the mouse. Nice. Let me find my site plan. So, not bringing my site plan up for me.
You have to go down. Scroll down.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Used to have my own technology. Okay, so, so this is the layout plan, and as Jeff was saying, on the east side and the west side of the building are the new proposed additions. If you looked at it in the existing condition, there was actually parking on the east side of the building, which was where the entrance to Ruby Tuesdays was. And now, in this condition, there's going to be a building addition there, and that infills that space. And so what we've done to change the circulation, and really, this is the biggest site plan change aside from the building additions, is on that east side of the building. I guess you can't see my arrow. Anyway, we've changed that circulation from two-way, taken out the parking and the handicap spaces that used to be at the entrance to Ruby Tuesdays, and replaced it with one-way circulation and angled parking. And that's the biggest change to the site. So, as Jeff was saying, there's no increase to water and sewer flows using the existing water and sewer connections. There's, the only change to the drainage will be on that eastern end of the building, because we're changing the parking to angled parking from pull-in parking. We have to modify the drainage slightly in that area, but we've made accommodations for that. There's a slight decrease in impervious associated with what we're doing here, and we've moved the handicap spaces to the north side of the building, across the parking lot from the main entrance. There is existing mature landscaping on the site, which will be refreshed, as well as new plantings being proposed around the building in places where we need to infill. And as far as site lighting goes, this is a pretty well-lit area because there's development all the way around it, and there's existing site lighting off-site as well as some on-site. We're actually getting lighting for a part of this site from light fixtures that we have no control over. The ones that we do have control over will be replaced with LEDs that'll be dark sky compliant and should meet the conditions that are at the site while, you know, providing adequate lighting for the site. Ruby Tuesdays had a lot of building-mounted lights along the side, which was how they lit the sidewalks to get everybody in. We are replacing, they're going away, and we're replacing them with something much more subtle, but we'll provide good lighting for the sidewalks on the building. You know, there'll be those building-mounted lights infilled, and they'll also be dark sky compliant. We've actually provided photometrics for those building-mounted lights. The other lights will end up, you know, providing a level of what is there now, but with a better, more efficient lighting. Let's see. I think that pretty much covers it. We have, oh, another thing, when you come in, when you pull into this, on the south side of the building, there's actually a screen wall on that side of the building with a guide rail in front of it. We're going to reduce, we're removing part of that, that screen wall, and my understanding is refuse, where's Jeff? Refuge will be internal to the building.
See where it is right now.
Okay, right. And I think that pretty much covers it. Do you have any questions? Now I'll defer to Giovanni to speak about the building.
Good evening, Giovanni Palladino. I'm the in-house director of architecture and design with the development team. So the challenge here is how do you make a Ruby Tuesday look like a modern building with cutting-edge treatment for men with prostate cancer? So it's basically clean lines, modern design, there's not a lot of fenestration or blazing because of the type of use and the type of technology that's within the building. So this is just one of the first preliminary sketches and an approach. As you can see, it looks nothing like the existing Ruby Tuesday. They want to make sure the building really symbolizes the modern techniques and treatments that are going to be happening here. This is really going to be a regional destination for men's health, especially men with prostate cancer. So this is very preliminary. It's going to evolve a little bit more as we continue to go, but that's basically it for right now. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from board members?
I do.
Okay, go ahead, Fred.
All right. The handicap parking, how many parking spots are you going to have? Because it sounds like you're going to need a lot more than a Ruby Tuesday.
Okay, so, here, we'll bring that plan back up, if I can. Yeah, I don't see it anymore. That's all right. So based on the number of parking spaces at the site, we're going to need three handicap parking spaces. You know, this is day treatment, it's not stay, and per the requirements of New York State Building Code and ADA, this is what we're going to be required to provide.
You gonna have any, I forgot what we call, places to plug in your electric car?
Oh.
You planning on doing that at all at this site? I know we have a place across, right across the...
Right, I think there's...
But that's only for their models.
Well, I, I, I think 16 of those stations right, literally right across Westage Drive from us. If you've followed the news in the last six months, most of the major car companies have adopted the Tesla charger as the default charger for the vehicles going forward. So really, they've, this isn't a Betamax issue, right? They've actually decided they're going to use, most of them will use that same adapter for EV charging, so.
Although that still begs the question about whether you might plan on putting one or two chargers on-site?
We don't intend to. EV charging is a, is, it's a supply and demand issue, and with the 16 right across the, right across the street there, there's certainly not enough demand these days to justify. You know, the state has money for installation of chargers, but it, at best, at best, you can get to 50% of the cost, and they would sit there really unused because of a large number of charges that are really right there in the, you know, they're not, they're not 50 yards away.
There is one other charger there. It's not all, they're not all Teslas, so there is another charger. Every time I pass by it, I'm really seeing my charger. I thought it was just Tesla that they put it in.
Yeah, they added one, one other type.
Is this going to be like a CyberKnife-type thing, or is it radiation?
I don't know what a CyberKnife is, I'm sorry. It's hard to answer the, hard to answer that question, but it's a very, very focused radiation, again, specific to prostate cancer and linear accelerator. Typically, the men would attend sessions, you're there about a half hour once a week for 15 to 20 weeks. You're just kind of in, and then you're, and you're back out. So it's, again, a very, very focused treatment system.
You also indicated that you're doing other type of radiation in there, too.
Well, there is other imaging, right, both the MRI and the CT scan. Those are both kind of ancillary uses, but the major focus of this is the men's health.
And how many people did you indicate you're going to be working at?
I believe 16. I'll have to look at the application to the exact number, but I think that's the, I think that's the total number of people on the site.
Approximately, how many patients will be there at a time?
At a time? Waiting rooms are about 10 people, if I remember, are the exact number. So there's not a lot of people at any one time. This isn't a full waiting room, and particularly on the men's health side, they are staggered, so you're there and you're out, and there's maybe a couple, three men there that you'll briefly overlap with, but there's not, it's not waiting. It is very, very rigorously scheduled to come in and out of there.
Then you may have too much parking, then.
Yeah, the parking demand is much less than what you'd, what you'd need certainly for a restaurant, and less than what you need for what's there already.
And I think your application materials began to describe how regulated medical waste and radioactive waste would be handled, but could you just sort of get into that briefly?
Sure. Any radioactive waste that's generated is handled by licensed providers, taken off-site, and dealt with according to the required regulations. Medical waste, which we typically call a red bag waste, you'll see them with sharps if there's blood draw, not that that's something that happens here, but that's a typical use for a red bag waste. But anything that becomes regulated medical waste gets its own red bag, goes in its own area for storage, and then again, is handled by a separate medical waste hauler who takes it, and usually in an incinerator at a place off-site.
I assume you have the necessary radiological shielding in the facility?
Well, that's part, I talked about those three-to-four-foot thick concrete walls. That's the, that's for the linear accelerator, and that's the shielding. And the MRI and CT, they use a more traditional lead shieldings, usually an eighth to three-eighths of an inch thick. There's a physicist's job who's to calculate the radiation coming out of the machines and how thick the lead needs to be. It's in the windows, it's in the, it's in the walls and the doors to make sure there's no leakage there. So that's, again, one of those regulated processes for building imaging, to make sure there's no leakage.
Will there be precautions if there's a breach in that concrete?
I'm not sure what you're actually asking.
If there's radiation and there's some sort of a crack, or it doesn't seal correctly when you shut that big rolling door, wouldn't the radiation get out?
Right, I think the door is either, right, I'll verify that, but I don't think it's going to work if the door isn't closed, but that's, isn't closed appropriately, so.
Truthfully, that's scary enough, just going in a brick building, that room with the three-feet walls and being trapped in there. That's scary to me.
But if you're getting treated, it's probably good.
Yeah, the alternative is scarier than that, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'd probably have to be drugged to be brought in there. Scary, man.
Anyway, we are diverging here. Go ahead.
Is most of the medical park, I know it's quite a clever design to have the front, you know, to change the look of the actual existing building, but is that where most of the medical stuff is going to be, in the existing building park?
So the imaging, the linear accelerators here, again, on the, you can follow this on the, on the backside, and then the MRI and CT are up in this quadrant, expanding the, really, the waiting areas here in the corner of the existing building, and the support is in the rest of the existing building. There's just a, there's a separate exit right here for people coming out of the MRIs. They don't have to go back through the waiting room, so...
And it answers a lot of questions. That means that you're going to be able to build it to specifications to have, you know, the whole shielding and everything.
Yes, because the new work is, is the, right, the new work is the shielding work, yes, if that's where you're going. Yes, absolutely.
You could have served food. Could have a beautiful kitchen.
Sounds like the kitchen's going to go.
Kitchen's going to go.
Where is the nearest facility like this?
Is there one in Danbury? Right, okay, Danbury, yeah, all right. I didn't think they actually had one there now, but it's okay. Yeah.
Oh, very good. Well, we'll have more opportunity for questions and discussion at our next meeting, but for now, we're basically considering acceptance of the application and referral. So unless there are any more pressing questions at this point, and I'll ask Dominic if you have any questions.
No, sir.
Okay. So before we get on to a motion, I'd just like to see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to make informal comments about this application. If there are, please raise your hand.
Nothing on my side.
Nothing on this side. All right, well, there will obviously be a public hearing later on in the process for those at home.
A good presentation for tonight, though.
Yeah, and also, I advise members, if you haven't had a chance to look through the complete package, there are preliminary floor plans, you know, the whole set of building elevation drawings, so quite amount of detail for this stage of the proposal. All right, is there a motion to accept the application for amendment to the site development plan for the proposed 21 Westage Radiology Center at 21 Westage Drive, and to refer the this application to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, and Rambout Fire District for review and comment?
She'll move.
Jody moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. So we'll have a more complete discussion, although it was pretty complete tonight, actually, from our consultants at the December fourteenth meeting, and we can also discuss the SEAKER classification and lead agency designation at that meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I look forward to seeing you again.
Okay. All right, the next new submittal tonight is 2228 Osborne Hill Road and 9 Bergoff Drive, lot line realignment. Applicants seek lot line realignment approval to revise the lot line between Lot One, consisting of 22,425 square feet, located at 228 Osborne Hill Road in the R20 zoning district, and Lot Two, consisting of 33,715 plus or minus square feet, located at 9 Bergoff Drive in the R20 zoning district as well. This lot line realignment will result in Lot One consisting of 22,439 square feet, plus or minus, and Lot Two consisting of 33,703 square feet, plus or minus. And this is submitted pursuant to Town of Fishkill Town Code Chapters 132-46 and 132-47. And this has already been referred to the town engineer, town planning board attorney, and town building inspector, zoning administrator for their review and comment. And the board will allow informal comments from the public after the discussion of this application. So, welcome, and please give us just a brief indication of what this is about.
We'd be glad to. I'm Hans Houston, and I'm at the 9 Bergoff. This is Bruce Dubois, he's at 228 Osborne Hill. We've been neighbors for over thirty years, and he's up on the hill, and I'm down a little. And most recently, he was looking to put in a fence in the backyard to take care of his dogs, and I've been looking to do some gardening in the forest that's between our two places. And as we looked at it, we realized that the lot line that goes between our property goes across a ridge. And so what we decided to do was to rearrange it, so that it would go up the hill and then along the ridge, and there, where he could have exactly what he needed for his dogs, and I could have that slope, which is gonna be great for my garden, our plant.
Okay, that sounds basic enough.
Oh, as, and minor detail, in doing this, it's about 700 square feet that we're exchanging. It's exactly the same.
So there's really no change in the, let's say, the buildable area on the two, the two lots as they exist?
Correct.
Good. I think that, it sounds like it certainly meets the intent of our relatively new provisions for lot line rearrangements. John, I don't know if you've had a chance to take a quick look at the plot?
I, I have. I would have generated a memo, but I actually erroneously thought this was being referred tonight, so, but it is a very simple lot line realignment, so I can certainly have something ready for the next meeting, and it should, I don't see any problems whatsoever with it.
And Dominic, just if you can comment on the basics of whether this appears to meet the required, the legal requirements of those code provisions dealing with lot line rearrangements?
Yes, this qualifies, as I understand it, for the lot line readjustment, realignment. Every town calls it something different. Lot line changes, lot line realignment, lot line readjustment. So sometimes I forget where I am, but it's a, it's a fairly expedited process to accommodate the fact that there's really no new construction that's involved with this, and we have two willing parties that would like to transfer some property to accomplish their ends.
And I seem to recall with, we've had a couple of similar lot line realignments in recent months that the board has reviewed, and this appears similarly to be a Type II action under SEAKER. Section 617.5C16 is what we refer to, that puts lot line adjustments into Type II action, so.
Yes.
I think we could go ahead and classify this proposal at 228 Osborne Road, 9 Bergoff Drive, the lot line realignment as a Type II action pursuant to SEAKER. So if the board agrees with that, could we get a motion to do that?
So move.
I'll second it.
Anthony moves it, Fred seconds it. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes seven to zero. And also, normally, we've waived public hearings for these types of lot line realignments, so if we could get a motion to waive a public hearing on this proposal at 228 Osborne Road, 9 Bergoff Drive, that would be appreciated.
So move.
Anthony moves that one again. Is there, Fred seconds it again. Any further discussion? All in, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. And as I mentioned earlier, if there is anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this, this would be the time, even though we're not gonna hold a public hearing on it, we certainly can hear any informal comments that anyone might have. Is there anyone who would like to? Please raise your hand. And I don't see any.
Think the public has, is at the podium, so.
Yeah, well.
Exactly.
This is video.
They've already commented.
It's worth asking.
Two neighbors and brothers.
All right. Good to add a little bit of humor into these situations. All right, so I think we're all set for now. Let's see, oh, well, one more thing we could do, since it is an expedited review. I guess I'll ask everybody at the table whether we should authorize our attorney to draft a resolution of conditional final approval.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
All right, so this would be for the proposed 228 Osborne Road, 9 Bergoff Drive revised lot line for the board's review and consideration at the December fourteenth planning board meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
All right, Robbie moves it, is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that carries. So we will see you back at next month's meeting, and we'll go through the resolution at that time.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks for coming.
Good evening, man.
Thank you.
They should all be there.
That's so neighborly, isn't it? It's so neighborly.
That was pretty nice to see.
I'm on the garden, and putting beds, and it's just very cute.
We should periodically just ask people to come in and request those kind of things.
I love that.
That was beautiful, yeah.
In fact, maybe more regularly.
Exactly.
More often. Okay. Moving on to project reviews. We are now at Fishkill Self-Storage Site Development Plan and Special Use Permit. Board to review the revised draft environmental impact statement scoping document submitted by the applicant to the Town of Fishkill Planning Board on August 30th, 2023, revised by CPL for Planning Board on September 26, 2023, and finalized between the applicant's planning consultant AKRF in consultation with CPL on November 1st, 2023, and to consider its adoption as the final written scope. So, welcome, why don't we ask Aaron Warner, is the applicant's environmental planning consultant from AKRF, and maybe if you could just briefly go through your memo to the board dated October 24th, that has the responses to comments from the, from the scoping session?
Yep, Aaron Warner, AKRF. Nice to see everybody again. Good evening.
You, too.
Good evening. I don't have a copy of that memo actually with me, but I, we did utilize that to, to come up with this revised scope, and I think, you know, we got all the written comments. I went through the video also, so I got a pretty good list of commenters, what was said on record during the meeting, what was said in writing. Your consultant, CPL, was comfortable with everything that was included in that memo, and we used that information and those responses to come up with the final scope that you've got in front of you. Sorry, I don't have that in front of me, but that's basically how.
You wanna borrow mine for a minute?
I could take one. If you have a copy, sure, sorry.
Yeah, and I didn't intend to go through every.
No, I have, I have those. Oh, okay.
I don't intend to go through, have you go through every single comment, but just, you know, sort of highlight some of them.
Yeah, well, some of the, I mean, traffic was a big one, obviously, where we got, we got the written comments from Anthony that echoed what he said at the last meeting verbally. We did get confirmation from our traffic consultant that they can do the fifteen-year look back in accidents. I think they actually got a little bit over fifteen years in their response from DOT, so that's why we have fifteen plus or minus, I think, in there right now, which we're fine with. Yeah, all the other changes are just, are tracked in this latest scope. I think we all agreed that stormwater wasn't gonna be something that we covered in the EIS. We covered that with the EAF. So I really think a lot of the, the bulk of the adjustments were on the traffic section. I think you'll see that.
Good, okay. Thank you for doing that. I was gonna ask Liz Axelson at this point to kind of describe the overall process that was involved in that, back and forth with CPL and the applicant's representatives in revising the draft scoping document, and then, again, maybe to highlight for the board just some of the significant revisions in the scoping document.
Okay, so I know I probably did some of the same, took some of the same steps that Aaron took, going through the written comments, going through, looking at the video. We had a transcript, do we have a transcript?
No.
No, we didn't.
There was a transcript, but there's always the, right, the video.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was, it was the video and the letters, and then I had my own notes. And so I started to make notes. I honestly don't remember who did what first, but in the end, they were very pointed changes in the outline, and a lot of the changes, the most substantial ones, had to do with traffic, because there was a great deal, a very specific public commentary about intersections that hadn't been, you know, included in the outline before as being just as important as the most obvious intersections. So, hang on just a second, let me find an example. So I'm looking at the scoping outline, the marked-up one that you should have, which, what's the date on this thing?
Well, the most recent revision.
Yeah, November, what? November first. It was November first, sorry, I've been juggling with another scoping process.
I think page nineteen starts the traffic.
Yeah, page nineteen, and so there are added intersections or points that needed to be studied. For example, the intersection of New York State Route 9D and Rock Hill Road, and then also New York State 9D and Verplank Road. Those are added intersections in addition to Van Ness and the I-84 east and westbound on-off ramps, and then, I believe, yeah, to the north, the intersections that are added to the list are New York State Route 9D and Chapardi Place, I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, and New York State Route 9D and Dogwood Lane. Because if you're just looking, oh, where would somebody turn around, you might just look at the next thing to say the north, but what people are really doing when they go north is they're gonna take a left, so they can come out and take a right. So that was very helpful, and that, considerable amount of that did come from public commentary. It was very, very helpful. And then I believe from the board, I'm, I'm on page twenty now, I believe this came from the board, having to do with there being figures or diagrams of the existing conditions, and then using those same figures or diagrams to show the potential pathways that people might take when they're making these turns that could become hazardous. So those are just a couple of examples, and I don't know if you want me to actually read through, for example, the third, I'm sorry, one, two, three, four, I don't know if that counts, five, six, paragraph, accident data will be summarized. There was a change there. So I'm gonna just, I'm just gonna read through the paragraph. Accident data will be summarized for New York State Route 9D between approximately the Rock Hill Road and Verplank Avenue intersections, south of the project site, and the Chapardi Place and Dogwood Lane intersections located north of the I-84 interchange. The accident data will be obtained for a minimum of ten years, up to fifteen-plus years, as available from New York State DOT, or NISDOT, the Town of Fishkill and the City of Beacon. The accident data request will be for the period between January 1, 2008, up to the most recently available data. Data will be reviewed, I'm paraphrasing and specifically summarized, relative to the intersections of Route 9D at Van Ness and south to New York State Route 9D at Rock Hill Road and 9D at Verplank Avenue. Detailed accident data for all recorded accidents will be contained in the appendix to the TIS. So I just, and some of that, I'm going on to page twenty-one. Again, the bottom of page twenty-one is a few paragraphs, but it talks about using diagrams to show the pathways. I think it's both existing and what would happen with the project in place. So those are just some big highlights, and we didn't have a whole lot of back and forth. I didn't think this time it was a lot easier to, you know, go through the comments and have the consultation and move forward on the outline.
Yeah, I think the board went through it with, with both groups quite, quite in detail at the October meeting, so we really hashed out a lot there.
Yeah, that was very helpful when the board had that discussion. And then over on page twenty-three, the single-family home alternative is in there, single-family detached dwelling. I think those are the big highlights, unless you wanted me to touch on anything else? The board have any questions about how the outline came out?
Yeah, let's see if the board has any questions or comments. And then I was gonna make one suggestion on the cover page. We probably, once this is adopted, hopefully tonight, should indicate the date of adoption, right? Well, it's, there is a place on, on page two.
But maybe on the front.
But on the front.
Yep.
Probably put "adopted" right under the title, or something like that. And actually, the title probably for the final should say, on the last line, Draft Environmental Impact Statement, Final Written Scoping Document.
Or maybe we get rid of, oh, okay, yep.
And then obviously, all, I guess, all of the headers, if we're gonna keep the header format, basically, I think you could probably scratch all the revision dates and just say "final adopted scope" with the date of that.
Good point. So it would be Final Environmental Impact Statement Scoping Document on the bottom, and then the top would just be?
Then like, "adopted."
It could be just, it could just say, the top line would be "adopted."
Adopted November 9th, 2023.
If all goes well.
If all goes well, in a minute or so. Does that sound reasonable? Does that sound reasonable? Meanwhile, any other questions or comments from board members or other things we didn't cover?
The comments I had provided at the scoping session were incorporated, so no further comment. And I thought the way it was presented, the changes involved was very helpful as well, so appreciate that, too.
Yeah, and obviously, we'll take the, all the boldface stuff out for the final written scope, right? We just, it'll just be straight text.
Mm-hmm.
And then, maybe we'll ask a combination of Dominic and Liz to just kind of briefly describe the next steps in the environmental impact statement process, assuming the written scope is adopted tonight. You know, where do we go from here?
Sure. Once the scope is adopted, it will be circulated to all interested involved agencies, everyone that's on the distribution list, so they can have it for their records and also to consider what comments they may want to make as the EIS process moves forward. The next step really is depending on the applicant, and they'll move as quickly or as slowly as the applicant moves as far as preparing a proposed draft environmental impact statement, which they will then submit. That phase of the process really focuses on whether or not the applicant has touched on the items that are in the scope, and to make sure that the required analyses are presented and put forward and are sufficient for the public's review and other involved agencies' review of that document. You know, so the proposed DEIS might not be something that the board necessarily agrees with conclusions or statements that are included in it, but the purpose of it is to get to a point where you can commence public review. And that will be the next phase essentially of the process where you'll be comparing that draft against this scope, assuming that you adopt this.
Good.
And we'll also post a notice in the environmental notice bulletin. That'll be emailed out tomorrow. If all goes well.
Yes. Which I read to my wife to put her to sleep at night. I'm not sure many other people read the EMB anymore.
I don't think.
What you'll have to start wondering is if she stays awake through that.
I can't sleep tonight. Could you please read the EMB to me?
You know, I have to try that.
All right.
I know the dilemma. It's a glazing over. Yeah.
Anything else, Liz, for the benefit of the board? I think we're pretty much there.
Agreed.
All right. Let's not delay any further. All right, so this is the adoption of the final written scoping document. Is there a motion for the planning board to adopt the, well, let's just call it the final written scoping document for Fishkill Self-Storage, 1292 Route 9D, Special Use Permit, and Site Development Plan? I'll refer to the most recently revised November 1, 2023 draft as reviewed and revised tonight. And the revisions are, again, basically just those format changes we mentioned. As the final written scope and distribute, file, publish, and distribute the final written scope as required in the SEACER regs. Is there a motion to that effect?
So I'll move.
Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Robbie seconds it. Any further discussion? Any questions from the applicant before we vote?
No, thank you.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. Excellent. So we have a final scoping document.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you all for your participation and cooperation. Welcome back for the project review for SKLJ Inc., Site Development Plan, a Special Use Permit. Board to review the submission received from the applicant's representative on October 5, 2023, and a draft negative declaration. So, Mr. Burns, if you could briefly update the board on the October 25 submission.
There was only minor changes made to the plans for the last submission. Those are the planting schedule, and I also included two additional parking spaces on the south portion, the south portion of the property, right in this area here by the residential structure, is requested by John. So I think there's a, I have a total of.
Steve, give me a camera to move, plus a little bit to the mic.
Usually, I don't have that problem.
I know.
The schedule includes 10 Norways Bruce is proposed. Those are mainly up in the, up in the front of the property on the, along the east side here in the northeast, over in this area here. And then there's 21 Arbor Vitae, which are generally along this area here, which, above the multifamily, the multifamily parcel to the north, there's also a fence to back them up.
We did get a memo from CPL dated November 8, 2023, just basically indicating no further comment. So unless you have other comments to mention, John, I think we'll just start that.
No, they addressed everything that we had previously brought up, so we're satisfied from the engineering standpoint.
Good. Any questions or comments from board members?
What do we do about the sidewalk on that? Do we do anything on this one?
There is no sidewalk, and there isn't going to be one. Now, we did talk about that.
We did, right?
We did talk about it.
We said we're just going to let it go.
Well, it's, again, I don't think we need to reiterate everything we talked about at the last meeting, but we said there really is nowhere to go on this road for a sidewalk, so unless people have other ideas at this point. I don't think the frontage of the site is really conducive to a sidewalk anyway.
There's so many people, but I go on that road a lot, a lot of people walking on that road. There really are. Everybody who, I guess a lot of people walk into the village, have no idea where they're going, but they're certainly walking on it.
That's a tough place to walk to, considering you have to navigate a pretty distant section of Route 9 there.
And if we recall, in the conference of plan update, we did highlight those areas of the town that were priority areas for sidewalks, and this was not one of those. Route 9 itself is, but not Old Route 9.
Well, I would believe that anybody who's walking on Route 9 during this period would come on Old Route 9 just to get away from the traffic and the swamp.
Well, but if you're going to circumvent Route 9, you're going an awful long way out of the way to walk along Old Route 9.
You're also going up a steeper hill.
And also going through a different kind of an environment. I won't get into details, but. All right, I think that's enough on that because we already hashed that out, and we just rehashed it, and I don't want to re-rehash it. Any other questions or comments from board members?
We were talking earlier about that you're going to have trailers and stuff like that in camper, whatever.
Bob, I'm sorry, you got to move that microphone closer. I got yelled at before.
Huh?
Can't hear you.
Okay, sorry.
Thank you.
So, same before about the trailers and everything else, like, is there like a defined way that it's going to be in there, or is it just going to be, like you said, you didn't know how many could be there or not be there by just by how they're putting them in there? So like, is there like defined ways of storing? Because like, people are going to probably want to get their stuff in and out? So I'm just wondering, like, you know, because you could put 50 things in a space or 25 things in a space, depending on how it has to have access and stuff like that. That's, I'm sure people have concerns about that.
Uh, yes.
How that's going to look like.
We haven't, I don't believe that we've worked out the fine details as far as, you know, spacing and everything else until we have an idea of actually what's going to be, what's going to be put in there.
Okay.
If the parking lot could be on McAdam, what you're?
The area right now is mainly, I believe it's recycled asphalt, Millings. So it'll remain Millings.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate what Steve already mentioned, that there is now a landscaping plan and planting schedule that was submitted as requested by the board. Any other questions, questions or comments from Dominic at this point?
No, sir.
One thing I was talking with Debbie about was whether a new general municipal law referral is going to be, needed to be sent to the county because the earlier referral was determined by the county to be incomplete. So prior to considering approval of this action, we're going to need to send the revised GML out, and I think we now have at least what I would consider adequate to send them.
Unfortunately, I'm going to need copies from Steve and a USB to get to the county because that's a separate referral.
Okay, sorry.
So you're going to have to get me everything other than the application and EAF. I'm going to need a hard copy of everything that's coming for this board currently, and on a USB because it's got to go to the county. They won't take me, they won't take pieces. I have to start from scratch with that.
And they won't take the, will they take the USB that I gave you with the last stuff on it? No, okay.
It is the county. And I have to be on the hard copies, they just won't take digital. Have to do both.
How many copies do I need?
Just one.
Okay, and?
And one USB. That's it.
Are they going to include, are they going to have to include the public comment response?
No.
Okay.
All they care about is the site plans and landscaping and the lighting, the details like that.
Okay.
All right, so that's assuming that we later, after we go through the environmental assessment forms and the draft negative declaration, if we get to the, get through those, then we'll consider authorizing a draft resolution for approval. And that GML, it's critical to get that stuff into Debbie as soon as possible so that that can all be processed by the county in time for the December 14 meeting. So let me ask John to review the draft EAFs parts two and three and the draft negative determination of environmental significance prepared by CPL.
Okay, so the draft EAF part two, we only identified out of all 16, I believe, categories, two that we thought should be checked yes, and even at that, they were both identified as small, no or small impact. So the first one was number seven on page, I think, four, 10.
Right.
Impacts on plants and animals, and item B was checked as a small impact, and that's simply because of the hit on the EAF mapper for potential for Indiana bat habitat. But I don't believe you guys are planning to cut any trees anyway, so there really is no impact. And then the only other item that we identified as a potential small impact was on page six of 10. Why is my computer not? Okay, impact on aesthetic resources. Item A, proposed action may be visible from any officially designated federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource. And this again, because the EAF mapper checked its proximity to the Hudson River, even though there's really no chance to see this site from there. So again, we checked it as a small impact.
At least in the near future.
Right.
Maybe if you're going over in a plane.
There are no other items that exceeded any of the thresholds that are listed under the categories. So I recommend the board, unless they disagree with what we drafted, consider adopting the part two and part three EAF as is.
Yeah, so the part three simply confirms that this would be no significant adverse impacts on the environment.
Correct.
So you want to go through the neg deck very quickly?
Sure. Okay, this is draft number three that was sent dated November 8. If adopted, we'll write in the date of adoption at the beginning. I'm not going to go through the project description. I think we've all seen this enough to know what they're proposing to do. And I'll just quickly go for the, go through the findings to support potential neg deck. Number one, the proposed action will involve a half acre of disturbance and is not anticipated to change the percentage of pervious or impervious surface throughout the previously disturbed site. As the proposed disturbance is less than an acre, a stormwater pollution prevention plan has not been deemed necessary. Two, the project site was flagged as potentially containing habitat for the Indiana bat. As no tree clearing is proposed, the proposed action is unlikely to have any effect on the Indiana bat. Three, while the project site is located approximately three miles from the Hudson River, which is a scenic aesthetic resource, it is unlikely to be seen from that area. Four, the proposed action will result in an increase in noise pollution during construction phase, however, this will be mitigated by the fact that the construction will be temporary and all work will follow requirements of the town code. Number five, the proposed action will not result in any impacts on geological features, air, agricultural, aesthetic, open space, and recreation, and energy resources, transportation systems, or human health. And that's it.
All right. Any questions or comments from board members?
Nope. All good.
Seems straightforward. Dominic, any questions?
No, sir.
All right. Let's start with the environmental assessment forms. Is there a motion to approve the draft EAFs parts two and three as reviewed tonight and authorize the chair to sign them? Fred moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Jody seconds it. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. And is there a motion to approve the draft neg deck for SKLJ Inc. as reviewed tonight and authorize the chair to sign it?
Second.
Fred moved it. I think Fred moved it.
I think Fred's okay is a.
Yeah, I think that was, that was a motion, and Anthony seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That will. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That also carries seven to zero. So, um, assuming that the general municipal law referral packet is sent out and we hear back from the county, can we get a motion to authorize the planning board attorney to prepare a draft resolution of preliminary and conditional final site development plan and special use permit approval for SKLJ Inc. for the board's consideration at the December 14th meeting? Is there, Anthony moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
That was Kevin?
Yeah.
Kevin seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. So we will see you back next month.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. You too.
Bye.
Thank you. All right. We're moving right along here. The next project review is companion animal hospital and dog training facility, amendment to site development plan, and amendment to special use permit. Board to review the submission received by the applicant's representative on October 25th, 2023. Welcome.
I'm Eric Rogie with Hudson Land Design.
Um, so why don't you give us a quick update on the revised submission and, um, describe how the details of the project have been modified since the October 12th meeting?
Uh, was a lot of smaller changes. The big, the biggest changes I could think of would be we revised our water service. We realized that there was a water service, a water main stub on our side of the road. So we don't need to, I can't see the screen here. We don't need to go into the Route 9 right away for the water service, which is good. The existing building has a, a water service off the stub. So we can put the new water service right on that stub. We also added a bunch of detail to the landscaping plan. We added a, a double row of, I think I had that on there before, but we extended it and specified what that is, that the double row of screening trees along the, uh, Long Carroll Drive, I think it is. It's a, I think they're green giants. They're a fast growing evergreen shrub. So it should provide some, some good screening. Um, those are really the only major changes to the plan. And there was, there was some changes to the, to the SWIP as well, some technical things. So other than that, it's, it's the same. We have, I have Megan. She can give more information on the, the dog behavior training facility. I know we, we talked about that quite a bit the last meeting and she, she can answer any questions and can describe it if, if you want to hear that.
Sure. That would be great.
All right.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Megan Corret and I am a certified dog behavior consultant and I'm working with Dr. Hope and Dr. Jeremy, the veterinarians at Companion Pet Hospital to expand their services to behavioral health. And I'm happy to answer any questions about dogs or their care.
Well, and we, we saw the materials that you provided and the submissions. Maybe, can you just kind of run through, you know, just a, kind of a description of how the whole facility process works when, um, when a new patient, let's say, is admitted to the facility?
Yeah, sure thing. So, um, we actually know our clients very well before they even start with us because we require a behavioral health assessment and a kickoff consultation. We meet the owner, we meet the dog, and we have strict requirements about, um, what kind of behavioral challenges we can and cannot help them with in our facility. And we always want to help the families that come to us, but some challenges are better handled in their home and not in our facility because we like our facility to be a quiet, calm, relaxing place for the dogs so that they can learn. Um, we don't want them to be stressed out or concerned about their neighbor or anything like that. So we work really hard to keep dogs, um, calm and under threshold and working with their trainers, doing their lessons every day. Um, you know, and we work a lot with puppies. We're already offering free puppy classes at the Fishkill in the hospital that's there already. Um, those classes are free because we know that we want to serve the community. We think it's important for puppies to have early socialization experiences so that they're not anxious for the rest of their lives. Um, and it is a way for us to give back. We work with adolescent dogs who are learning their, you know, their positions, sit down, stay, go to your mat. Those are really popular camps that we offer. Um, and sometimes we work with dogs who feel a little bit anxious about seeing other dogs. Maybe they have a hard time walking by them on the sidewalks. Um, so we work with them to build their confidence and give them coping skills so that when they go home to their owners, they can practice , uh, just being calm and neutral instead of, um, worried or anxious on the street. That's, I, I would say those are our most popular services. We've also helped dogs who are afraid of vets. Um, and Companion is really great to work with because they allow us to bring these dogs in every day to have happy visits and eat treats in the lobby, stand on the scale, go on the table, you know, get palpated, listen to their hearts. Um, and, and we do it in a very calm and relaxed way until those dogs feel confident to go to the vet and be treated.
One of the things that people came in and talked about before was the barking of the dogs.
Yeah.
And that was what put some of the neighbors, when they first came in, they brought that up. And is that something you do work on? Or is that what you work on at the?
So we do do trial boards. There, when I mentioned there are some behaviors that are not appropriate for working on in the facility. Separation anxiety is one of those behaviors that we do not work on in the facility because those dogs tend to be very vocal, very anxious and very worried. So with, um, it's another way we would not help those clients, um, if that's, you know, if they're getting medication for that. But we actually do that virtually, coaching them over the computer. So those dogs are in their own homes. If we're not sure about a dog, we do something called a trial board where the dog comes and stays with us for four hours. The goal of that is to see, do they settle in their housing? Can they be handled by more than one staff member? Um, do they look like they're going to be relaxed enough to actually learn some new behaviors while they're with us? Um, and in this way, we wait out dogs that we think are going to be noisy and, and bothering. It's really hard on the other dogs if we have barkers. So we really try not to have that. Um, it's also hard on the staff. You know, like imagine being around barking dogs all day would be so stressful. So we, um, there's a, I forget the name brand, but there's a, a thing that people who have Airbnbs use, noise aware. And the other Instinct facilities that are operating have this in their facility. Um, and it, it measures like if there's a noise event, right? So if you have an Airbnb, you might get noise aware. And if somebody sneezes really loudly, it's not going to cause an alarm. But if they're having like a raging party for three hours, it causes an alarm. Um, and it actually records the data and gives you a printout. If there is a noisy incident happening, it's texted to the management so that they can, um, address it. Obviously, the people who are there know it, but if, if I were not on site for some reason and there was a noise incident, I could look on the cameras. I could call my staff and we would find out about it very quickly so that we could solve the problem quickly. I did send the noise aware data from another Instinct location so that you could like see what that looks like.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I think that's a good explanation of what we could expect at this location. So thank you for sharing that.
Sure. Did you guys get to watch the videos of the dogs playing?
Wait, I didn't see that.
Okay. So we, we do run play groups outdoors during business hours, usually between 10 and 6:00. But the dogs, I, if it's a really good, healthy play, the dogs are not barking. Uh, we do not have indoor outdoor runs where the dogs are just running back and forth, barking wildly. Um, so the, the play groups are actually usually pretty quiet outside.
I think all applicants should provide videos of dogs playing, but that's.
And young children.
Their dogs, dogs bark. They do bark.
They do bark. I'm not saying, the dogs are not silent, but, um, if they're barking a lot and extremely, then we know that they're stressed out. And that's exactly what we are like working with them to, to stop. You know, we're trying to reduce anxious.
I own several dogs. I love dogs.
Yeah.
But people need to know, dogs bark. That's what they do. They're dogs. They bark occasionally.
Occasionally. Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Um.
I'm glad we have someone like you in our community helping with people who perhaps don't understand their pets. So that's a good thing. Thank you.
So why don't we ask John Bodendorf to summarize CPO's engineering memo from November 8th?
Sure. Um, previously we had several comments, um, related to the stormwater design and the SWIP. Uh, they essentially addressed all those comments. So we don't really have a whole lot left. Um, this, this project still needs to be circulated to other agencies for, for review and comments. So I, I think it would be appropriate to do that sooner than later so that, um, I don't believe we're missing anything, but just in case there are items that we're not aware of, we can learn of those sooner than later.
Well, there's, there is one other update I have. We, we submitted to SHPO and they were, they responded at the end of last week that there's, uh, no further action required. We were in a archeologic, uh, sensitive check area, I think. So they, they confirmed there's no issues there.
All right. So we'll get a, um, confirmation of that?
Yep. Well, that'll be in the next submission.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from board members at this point?
No.
So, um, couple of quick things. Um, so you've submitted, I guess what you called concept plans for landscaping and a planting schedule. Um, I'm just thinking it might need a little bit more enhancement. And I'm wondering also on, so on the south side of the property where I guess that's where the outdoor area for the dog training facility is going to be, there's, so that's going to be fenced in.
Correct.
And I saw the details for the fence in the plan set, but I didn't see any landscaping in that area. And I'm just wondering if that's something that could be addressed.
We can, we can look into that. It's, uh, we add landscaping is going to increase the fill area because that whole area is a fill unless we planted low and had really tall trees. It's, it's, so we can think of something, but our, the, the fence helps screen as well because it's a solid fence and it's quite a distance from the, from the property to the south. There's a tree line along the south as well, but we can look into that as we develop it.
All right. And also see if, see if maybe there's some enhancement on that north side that's buffering the, um, the residential area to the north. Um, maybe some, um, in addition to the, um, what did you call the evergreens?
Uh, the Thujia Green Giants?
Yeah, the Green Giants. Maybe putting some, uh, you know, varied heights of some shrubs mixed in with those or something like that might help to.
Might not be visible. There's existing trees there already, but we can, we can definitely look into additional options. We wanted to get something out just to show exactly the most important parts first.
Good. Okay. Um, and then also with the lighting plan, that's going to be, um, we're going to need, I don't think we've seen a photometric plan yet for the new lighting. Um, and of course, it's all going to have to be dark sky compliant, shielded. So you indicated that, you know, those details can be worked out more also, but these are all things that the county is going to need to see for its general.
Right now, this is considered incomplete. So until I get that, we can't close out the county referral.
Right, right.
Okay.
I have to reschedule it.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
But we, but we can do the, the circulation for lead agency. I think we're, we've got enough information, right, for, for that?
Yeah, I, I think so.
I have a lot of work, but.
I think so. So we'll get to that in a second. Yeah.
All right.
Um, and, and I think that some of the things from the environmental assessment form probably will need some additional follow-up information like the, um, the northern long-eared bat and the timber rattlesnake habitats. Um, probably not going to be a big issue, but I think we'll need some documentation on that.
We, we reached out to, uh, New York State Natural Heritage Program to get more information on that because they're usually responsive.
Right.
On that.
And, um, you mentioned the SHPO responsible. Look forward to seeing that from them. Um, oh, and then we'll need, um, more detailed building elevations with materials, colors, textures, all that good stuff.
Okay.
Jonathan?
Yep, Fred?
Signage? You're going to be changing that?
Good question.
There's an existing sign there. Are we going to plan on adding to it? We'll have to look into that. There's an existing sign. If there, if there's something to be added, it'll just be very minor, adding to the existing sign.
Well, because what'd be concerned is going to be the lighting of it. Because what you had that, when that went in, that was, uh, 50 years ago. So.
Okay.
And this is, is really a gateway house because this is the first house in, or first unit in Fishkill.
Right. And then of course, it, part of the property is in the adjacent town.
Phillips Town.
Phillips Town.
Phillips Town.
So, yeah, well, we will definitely get the referral on that, um, when we get to the lead agency. But, so, well, why don't we, um, talk about the SEAKER classification? I think CPO's previous memo indicated this could be classified as an unlisted action. Um, does that sound right, Dominic?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, and it should probably be a coordinated review with involved agencies like DOT and County Health Department and the adjacent town of Phillips Town. So, um, I think it would be appropriate to get a motion to classify this proposal as an unlisted action, conduct a coordinated review under SEAKER, and circulate notice of the planning board's intent to serve as lead agency. There's a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Fred moves it. Is there a second?
Second.
Bob seconds it. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. So we will, um, take care of that lead agency intent notice. And if you can make sure you get the.
As soon as I get the notice already into parties, I will contact you and mention the copies.
Okay.
Good.
Bobby, Tuesday.
Okay. Sounds good.
And then I think for the general municipal law referral, we'll still need to get some more, um, detailed information on that. So that's still not quite ready, but.
They don't do it at the SEAKER at all. They don't have SEAKER or something.
Yeah, but we'll at least get the SEAKER process underway now.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. So we can go to, we're going to go to Phillips Town now. I think their submission deadline is next week.
Okay.
Actually, no. First Thursday of the month. So I think we missed it. Next month.
Okay. Okay. All right. Good.
All right. Thank you.
I think that's it for the night. All right. Thanks for coming. And finally, West Edge Self-Storage Site Development Plan. Board to review the submission made by the applicant's representative on October 25th, 2023. Welcome back.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I didn't think we would get here so fast, to be honest. At any rate.
Don't ruin it.
I'm not going to. Um, so Karen LoBruto for Lobella Associates. Um, we submitted the updated site plan that, uh, showed some revisions per the town engineer's, um, comments. Uh, we received the variances that we needed from the ZBA. Um, and so we're here seeking, uh, hopefully final site plan approval and we're hoping that. site plan approval, and we're hoping that the conditions that remain outstanding can be carried over. We are working with the Department of Health. We are in understanding with them that they're going to treat this project as they've treated other West Edge projects. We've got hydrant testing scheduled for November 20th, which was one of their comments to us, and then we'll be seeking approval from the village following that. Beyond that, I think the other outstanding conditions are the floodplain development permit, the maintenance and road agreement eneasement, let's see, the retaining wall and the bridge design, and I might be missing one, the performance bond. So, we are prepared to get those in action, and we're hoping that they can be carried over as conditions to the final approval.
Okay. You might want to just mention briefly, the results of the trip to the zoning board of appeals resulted in some changes in the signs, so you want to go over that real quickly?
Sure. So, we did have an iterative experience with that board. They felt strongly, with the guidance of the county, that there should be a reduction in the variances, and so we reduced the three variants... Sorry, the three signs that we were previously asking for to two signs, and then we're able to bring down the total square footage to meet the requirements per the zoning. So, in collaboration with them, we work to address their concerns and those of the counties.
Okay.
Do we have samples of that? Did we get samples of that?
Yes.
In your pocket, sir.
Yep, we have.
From them as well as me.
We have...
Before their pocket.
We have the elevations and sign details on a separate sheet.
Absolutely.
All right. John, would you like to quickly go through CPL's memo?
Sure. Basically, all the comments in our current memo are carryovers from previous memos, and they essentially all have to do with the outstanding outside agency approvals that... Sounds like you're making progress with the village and the health department. Those are probably the main ones of concern. And then the other items, I believe Karen already alluded to, some of which would be part of the building permit process, such as the bridge design plans, and if any of the retaining walls are over four feet, they would submit plans at that time. So, that's where it stands. Once they get through the village and the health department, we really don't have any other issues.
Okay. Any questions from board members? Questions or comments?
No.
I was just going to mention that regarding the sign variances, I do agree with what the zoning board of appeals came up with, and just suggest that the planning board accept these changes as an improvement in the plans. So, Dominic, let me ask you this. I think we're going to try to authorize the drafting of a resolution of conditional final approval, but should we also be doing one at this point for the floodplain development permit?
Yes.
Should we do them simultaneously?
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
Okay. All right. And I think as we're starting to hear a mention of the draft resolution would include, among other things, requirements for the performance bond, landscaping maintenance bond, and inspection fee that would typically go in the final resolution of approval, and that will require the submission of detailed cost estimates from the applicant to be submitted. So, if we're going to hope to see the resolutions for December 14th, we'd need the estimates by the submission date of November 29th.
Okay.
And then those will go to Mr. Bodendorf, and as the engineer for the planning board, he will make sure that the appropriate amounts for those things will be put into the resolution. Okay, so if there are no other comments or questions, is there a motion to authorize Dominic Cordisco to prepare draft resolutions of conditional final site development plan and floodplain development permit for West Edge Self-Storage for the planning board's consideration at the December 14th meeting? So, I think Bob moved it even without hearing the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jody seconds it. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. So, we'll see you back on December 14th.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you too.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Veterans Day.
All right, so we got through the agenda.
Oh, thank God.
I got a couple of real quick things I wanted to mention, and they are quick. So, one of them is this Talk of the Towns magazine that we get.
Yep.
And there are some really good articles in there that I think would be helpful to board members if you haven't already read them. One of them is on the site plan review process, basically, tips for a smoother site plan review process. And then there's another good one about basically the basics of SEAKER, and it's called EAFs and EISs, although I think they misspelled EISs. By putting too many of these little abbreviations in, you sometimes put the wrong letter in and you get something that's weird, but that's what they did. So, that's decoding the SEAKER alphabet soup, so the lesson from that learned is, when you're going to use these abbreviations, make sure you use the right letters. But no, there's a lot more in the article than that.
That's a good one, though.
Yeah, that's a good one. But there are some other interesting articles about pocket parks and how they support economic development.
I read that one.
And how town codes can support pollinator habitats, so there's good stuff in there. This actually was a planning and zoning and economic development issue, so it's nice to see that kind of thing come out every now and then.
This was a September/October issue.
September/October issue, yep. And then the other thing is, for any board members who still need training course credits for 2023, the New York Planning Federation is offering its Last Chance Training online webinar on Saturday, December 2nd, so you can earn anywhere up to four credit hours of board training just by going to that. So, registration is free for New York Planning Federation members, which we are, and I think I forwarded this information to planning board members a couple of times in the last month or so, so...
And this is an online, is it?
It's an online webinar, yep, and it's on a Saturday, so it should be, you know, easy for people to take who are working and can't get to things during the week. So, that's about it. That's all I had. Anything else from other board members or staff? Next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, December 14th, and the submission deadline is, as we said, Wednesday, November 29th for that meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, more to move.
All right, BJ moves it, and...
No.
BJ, not BJ, sorry. Robbie... Sorry, I was thinking about BJ not being here. Robbie moves it, and there was a second, but I don't think we need it. All of us seconded it.
All of us won't.
It might be wrong.
So, we're all out of here, and we are out of here early enough to have a good time for the rest of the evening.
I want to say I had all this coffee.
Not that we didn't have a good time here.
I can't go home and go to sleep now.